Members of the Board of Trustees, please respond present when you hear your name. Chairperson Thompson.
Present.
Trustee Arvinides. We lost him in the changeover, but we'll come back. Trustee Berger.
Present.
Trustee Clark. Trustee Cortez Vasquez. Trustee Ferrer.
Here.
Trustee Kim.
Present.
Trustee Lanaris Garcia. Trustee Mojica. Gotcha.
Here.
Gotcha. Trustee Oberfeld is absent and excused. Trustee O'Donnell Tormy.
Present.
Great. Trustee Shorter. Did you join? Okay, Trustee Sunshine.
Here.
Great. Trustee Wilkin. I think she was on. We can come back. Trustee Burke.
Present.
And Trustee Pecant. Present. Great. So, three.
I can see Trustee Shorter on the phone.
Okay, great.
Gail, I'm on too. Lanaris Garcia.
Oh, great. Thanks. Okay, great. So, we have a quorum. This public meeting of the City University of New York Board of Trustees is now called to order. On March 7, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202 declaring a state of emergency in response to the COVID-19 outbreak. On March 13, 2020, Governor Cuomo issued Executive Order 202.1, which included a suspension of law allowing the attendance to meetings telephonically or other similar service. Article 7 of the Public Officers' Law, to the extent necessary to permit any public body to meet and take such actions authorized by the law without permitting in public, in-person access to meetings and authorizing such meetings to be held remotely by conference call or similar service, provided that the public has the ability to view or listen to such proceeding and that such meetings are recorded and later transcribed. In accordance with the executive order, this board meeting is being held via video conference with a live stream found at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. A copy of the calendar agenda of items is also available online at the CUNY Board of Trustees website. Additional items may be added during the meeting. And as a reminder, please mute your phones so we can ensure that everyone can hear.
Okay, I'd like to ask the secretary to take to take a wall call attendance to members of the Chancellery.
Members of the Chancellery, please respond present when you hear your name. Chancellor Matos Rodriguez.
Present.
General Counsel and Senior Vice Chancellor for Legal Affairs Derek Davis.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and University Provost Jose Luis Cruz.
Present.
Executive Vice Chancellor and Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Institutional Affairs, Strategic Advancement and Special Counsel Glenda Grace.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor and Chief Financial Officer Matt Zapienta.
Present.
Senior Vice Chancellor for Labor Relations Pam Silverblatt is absent and excused. Vice Chancellor and University Chief Information Officer Brian Cohen.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Communications and Marketing Mike Teunco.
But if you're not, if you're not speaking, could you please mute? Because we're getting a lot of background.
Present.
Vice Chancellor for Risk Audit and Compliance Richard White.
Present.
Vice Chancellor of Human Resources Management Dorian Gloria.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor for University Advancement Andrea Shapiro-Davis.
Present.
Interim Vice Chancellor for Student Affairs Denise Maybank.
Present.
And we also are joined today by Senior University Dean Angie Kameth.
Present.
Okay, and I think we've now been joined by Trustee Clark. Trustee Clark, are you here?
I can see.
Yes. Okay, great.
Okay, thank you, Gail. As you know, the CUNY Board of Trustees could not convene its March 15, 2021 public hearing in person. Instead, the Office of the Secretary accepted written and video testimony and statements from concerned individuals on items on the calendar for this March 22, 2021 board meeting by email. Testimonies were accepted until 11:30 PM on Monday, March 15, 2021. Testimonies are always available for review in the Office of the Secretary. The Office of the Secretary has also posted on the Board of Trustees website all of the testimonies submitted since March of 2020. A total of 50 written testimonies were submitted. All 50 testimonies were submitted by faculty, students, and CSI staff members who expressed concern for the proposed changes to CSI's governance plan. Their concerns included diminishment of faculty, HEOs, and students' involvement in decision-making at CSI. Faculty also expressed concern regarding their role as head of college committees. Includes my report. Let me ask Chancellor Matos Rodriguez for his comments.
Thank you, Chair Thompson, Trustees, Presidents, and Vice Chancellors. It's great to be back with you again for my second report of 2021. As we recently marked the one-year anniversary of Governor Cuomo's directive for CUNY and other universities in New York State to cease in-person classes in response to the emergence of COVID-19, we also noted the vast progress we have made in recent months with the state's vaccination program and CUNY's role in these efforts. Last week, we announced that more than 100,000 COVID-19 vaccines were administered in just under three weeks at Maker Everest College in Brooklyn and York College in Queens. Our thanks to our colleagues at York and Queens and their leadership for their help in this effort. New York State and FEMA pioneered to convert facilities at both campuses into mass vaccination sites, which opened on February 24. Both colleges have each been vaccinating approximately 3,000 Brooklyn and Queens residents a day, ameliorating vaccine distribution disparities that have further imperiled the city's underserved communities. By today, around 150,000 people have been already vaccinated at both sites, which are now open to any New Yorker who's eligible for vaccination. Once again, our campuses are showing themselves to be anchor institutions whose functional well-being is indispensable to the neighborhoods of New York City. CUNY students are doing their part to aid in this effort, with some 2,500 CUNY students existing at state-run facilities, including those at Maker Everest and York, while nearly 1,000 nursing students are volunteering through the New York City's Health and Hospital System and Gotham Health Community-Based Clinics throughout the five boroughs under the supervision of dedicated CUNY faculty. It's more tangible evidence that New York's recovery runs through CUNY. We have launched and expanded our online campaign, encouraging all members of the university community to back up CUNY, a multifaceted multimedia campaign to encourage CUNY students, alumni, faculty, and staff to get their COVID-19 vaccination as soon as they become eligible. This campaign, the campaign will target communities of color to ease anxiety and hesitancy to the vaccine. The face of that campaign is Sandra Linsey, who became the first American to get a COVID-19 vaccine shot back in December 14. Sandra is an alumni of BMCC, where she was the class valedictorian and of Lehman College. Sandra has spoken proudly of launching her nursing career at CUNY and is a wonderful representation of the promise that resides in each of our students. In a special video message recorded for her campaign, Sandra, a Black woman, emphasizes the reasons why people of color should receive a vaccine as soon as possible as their communities have been among those most adversely impacted by the pandemic. "I immediately felt safer when I got the vaccine," Linsey says. "My fears were replaced with hope, and I knew that this is what we need to heal our country and to heal the world." While frontline workers like Sandra give us hope of getting this pandemic permanently under control, we're also grateful for the leaders in Washington have heeded the call of so many struggling regions and passed a sweeping relief bill that was signed into law by President Biden on March 11. We'll be providing a lot more details about the funding coming from the American Rescue Plan at ARPA in our next board meeting. As the state's vaccination program continues to accelerate and our budget situation becomes clearer, so do our plans for fall 2021 and the gradual and safe reopening of classrooms and return to more in-person instruction and offices. In order to facilitate a more in-person fall and to help safely increase on-campus activity, I have asked our Chief Operating Officer Hector Batista to work with the campuses to update our existing reopening plans by incorporating newer guidelines around vaccines, testing, screening, masks, and continued social distancing. As we did for the fall 2020, we would engage with all our community constituencies, including faculty, students, unions, all of our stakeholders in this process, and fall 2021 plans will be reviewed and approved to ensure they're in compliance with the most current guidance from New York State and the CDC. Although we know that our CUNY students are plenty resilient, we're also very aware that this pandemic has exacted a harsh mental toll on them. To help our community deal with the many stresses of this isolating time, CUNY announced last month a 24/7 crisis intervention service, enabling students experiencing personal difficulties to quickly connect with counselors via texting. It is one of several remote wellness initiatives unveiled last year at CUNY that expands mental health services during the pandemic to our students. This experience has also magnified the imperative to reduce student food insecurity. Thanks to a temporary but significant federal policy shift that took effect in January, thousands of previously unqualified students from CUNY are now eligible to apply for the Supplemental Nutrition Assistance Program, or SNAP, as it's more commonly known as food stamps. The action follows a directive by Governor Cuomo last fall that also expanded SNAP eligibility to our students. The university is currently in the process of communicating the changes to newly eligible students. We want all students to be focused on their education, not worrying about how they were paid for their next meal. Increasing access to SNAP further this objective and helps CUNY provide access to more New Yorkers from underserved communities. Also, as part of our commitment to expand access to a top-quality education for every person who wants one, CUNY has made key advances in its programs and support services for disabled students. Under this umbrella, the university has established itself as a national leader in educating autistic college students through innovative support services developed from our own groundbreaking research, particularly at the College of Staten Island. We promoted this mentoring and developmental services for our more than 800 autistic students earlier this month, and our highly-regarded National CUNY Neodiversity Conference was able to resume virtually after its postponement last year. As many of you know, February was Black History Month, and CUNY's commemoration was marked when several of our colleges' online programs were infiltrated by bad actors who posted racist, white supremacy messages and images. We immediately condemned the hateful, hurtful behavior, and CUNY has been working with the Governor's Office and the New York State Police Hate Crimes Task Force to aid the efforts to find the offenders. A week after those incidents, I was again compelled to repudiate the divisive racist behaviors that continue to strain the fabric of our society. This time, my comments came in reference to the spate of violence and discrimination against Asian Americans and Pacific Islanders here and across the country. Last week's horrific shooting in the Atlanta area, in which six of the eight victims were Asian women, has not been classified as a hate crime, but it nonetheless underscores the urgent need to address the uptick in anti-Asian bias. This responsibility falls to all of us to stand together and reassure our students that we will do everything in our power to protect them. Last month, I was proud to take part in a public briefing with Excelencia in Education and the University at Albany SUNY to celebrate a new report that validated CUNY's longstanding history of success in opening its door to Latinx students. The report noted that CUNY counts 16 of 34 Hispanic service institutions in New York State. Our colleges account for the greatest number of undergraduate Latino students enrolled in the state and have some of the highest percentages of Hispanic enrollment. CUNY also has the top five institutions in the state for awarding bachelor degrees to Latinos, the top three associate degrees, and the top five colleges for enrolling the most Hispanic graduate students in the state from 2018 to 2019. In promotion of another top priority career engagement initiatives, I joined with philanthropist and business leader Ariane Arch and, in a jointly authored column that ran in Queens, New York, column Business Leaders and Donors to Invest in Paid Internships for undergraduate students to help bridge the opportunity gap in the arts and other industries. Along those lines, and this should be pleasing even to those among us who are Mets fans, CUNY is thrilled to call the New York Yankees, one of the worst, most successful professional sports franchises, partners in creating career paths for CUNY students. This collaboration, which we announced last month, will provide CUNY students and alumni with professional development and employment and business opportunities throughout the famed Yankees organizations and include access to New York Yankees Sports Management Mentoring Program. Angie Kameth, the university dean for Continued Education and Workforce Development, will be talking a bit more about these partnerships after my remarks. Moving from hardball to roundball, CUNY was represented at the NBA Slamdown Contest earlier this month by Knicks rookie Obi Toppin, who helped raise $80,000 for York College as part of the NBA's support for predominantly Black-serving institutions and communities of colors impacted by COVID-19. The financial support would provide relief for students suffering from food insecurity, mental health needs, and other issues exacerbated by the pandemic. I am proud of how protective, proactive, and supportive CUNY has been in sustaining our community during this difficult time. I wrote about the many ways CUNY has helped students stay on track during the pandemic in an op-ed last month for AM New York. CUNY doubled down on professional development for faculty in online instruction and quickly adjusted several key support programs, including CUNY Edge, ASAP, and ACE, to a distance-learning environment, to name just a few of the ways we have enabled our students to maintain their academic momentum and pursue uninterrupted their educational goals. As many of you know, I will never pass up a chance to sing the praises of our esteemed graduates, and I was honored to co-host a virtual CUNY Power Hour with Assemblywoman and CUNY alumni Kimberly Jean-Pierre during last month's virtual caucus weekend. CUNY has produced 35 current state legislators, including Senate Majority Leader Andrew Stuart Cousins, Assembly Speaker Calhisti, and both higher education chairs, Senator Toby Anstavinsky and Assemblymember Deborah Glick. To show off the leaders and dedicated public servants whose academic journey included CUNY, we created a webpage to celebrate their accomplishments and CUNY roots, along with those of another 23 city, state, and federal leaders and New York City Council members who are all CUNY grown. For Women's History Month, we also spotlighted past, present, and future leaders who are educated in our colleges. One of those women is Hunter College alumni Misha Porter, who began serving in her new role as City Schools Chancellor last week, the first Black woman to hold that position. Another is CUNY trustee and USS chairperson Juwani P. Quandt, whose story we illuminated in a compelling video feature. Thank you, Juwani, for your leadership, devotion, and hard work during the course of this school year. CUNY is better and stronger for your efforts. And it is students like Juwani, their passionate and fearless beating hearts of our university, who make me optimistic and excited about our future. I mean, how can you not be hopeful when you see all smiling New Yorkers who are getting their vaccinations at our colleges and so many of our students and graduates assisting in that invaluable effort? All of the uncertainty of the past 12 months is now starting to be supplanted by hope. I am proud that we have come together and supported each other. I am honored to lead such a resilient students, faculty, and staff, and I want to wish everyone a restful and restorative spring recess in the coming days, as you certainly all deserve it. As many of you know, I have made transforming our career engagement and preparedness work with our students a priority. One element of that is engaging the private and nonprofit sectors to improve our curricular offerings and significantly increase paid internship opportunities for our students. I wanted to have university dean Angie Kameth give you a presentation on our work on that front. So, Angie, the floor is yours.
Thank you, Chancellor, and thank you so much to the Board of Trustees for inviting me in for a few minutes to share with you some updates today. I'm going to share my screen and hopefully everyone can see that. Sorry. Slideshow. Okay, great. What I wanted to do briefly is to share with you some headlines in terms of what we've learned. And this is really pertinent as per the chancellor. There's a really uncertain economy. I just came off of a webinar with, you know, just looking at the rebound, and it's going to take, you know, probably into 2022 for the New York economy to really fully recover. That said, we've been making, I think, great progress in terms of what we do at CUNY for students. And so, I wanted to share headlines today in terms of learnings, some of the impact, and then highlight some recent partnerships that I think will all give you a level of hope and optimism in terms of how the private and public sector are really coming forward and working and partnering with CUNY and our students. So, really quick, you know, I think something that we've learned, you know, particularly so over this past year, but over the past few years, is that working with faculty is the absolute key to long-term success for really improving our students' futures. Employers and getting our employers to work and to connect directly, authentically, and in a collaborative way with our faculty to really not just do the hiring that's so important, but to make sure that we are inside the classroom in terms of projects, internships, mentoring, advising, is really quite critical. Second point, and we've said this a lot, and we will continue to kind of beat the drum here, is that students should have opportunities early and often at CUNY to get prepared and to explore careers. We've been working really hard with employers and with our college partners to make sure that particularly at community colleges, students have access really from the moment they step on a campus to explore, to experience, to get internships, and to really understand the roadmap that they ought to follow in terms of having great post-graduation success. Employers, and this third point's really important. Even through the pandemic, we've seen probably 75% to 80% of our internships carry on. We've been able to see a huge uptick in the number of employers. Employers love to work with CUNY. The more that employers work with CUNY, they want to bring their peer organizations and sometimes even their competitors to the table to learn more and to work. They do insist on having clear points of contact, and they want these points of contact at the colleges. Some say they want one point of contact, which isn't quite reasonable in a system our size. But employers are really continually wanting to figure out how to work and how to have a slightly easier time of working and partnering with CUNY. But make no mistake, they're incredibly enthusiastic about our students, about the partnerships, and about the colleges. Alumni, the fourth point, are an incredible asset. As we speak to more and more employers, I was on the call, on a phone call last week with Verizon, where we have nearly 600 alumni. Employers are really excited about having alumni from CUNY work as ambassadors to help them reduce the cost and time of recruitment and bring in more CUNY alum just like them. And so, this is a great asset that we have at our fingertips. And then finally, I'm really particularly enthusiastic that there's a growing acknowledgement that stronger career outcomes are, you know, an important piece of the recruitment and enrollment picture at CUNY. And so, the chancellor asked me to kind of turn those headlines into kind of the dollar and cents and the kind of quantitative nature of what we're doing. And so, we look at really our work at CUNY Central in terms of these four buckets. I'm really proud to say that we've raised over $20 million for the next three years to focus in on career development and engagement activities. Up to 90, approximately 90% of these dollars are re-granted to all of our colleges. They pay for internships, they pay for staffing, they pay for advising, they pay for peer mentors, they pay for faculty and curriculum grants. We keep a small portion of it to have an employer engagement and kind of have that central point of contact that many employers are looking for, but the vast majority of funds go back to the colleges. In terms of employers, we've been averaging over the past three years, for each of the past three years, about 100 or so new employer relationships each year. We're constantly updating our Rolodex. Our goal here is to really pass along employer partnerships to college partners so that we can continue to surface and elevate and find new partners who want to work with CUNY colleges and recruit our students. And we do a lot of work to make sure that we've got a real diversity in terms of the sectors that are looking to tap into CUNY talent. In terms of upskilling and training, this is a relatively new area for us, and this really was born out of our experience last summer. As we were all looking at graduating 55,000 students into the most uncertain labor market in anyone's memory, we felt and heard from employers that a notion of the degree is important, but the degree plus is really an important aspect to a CUNY student's education. The plus is upskilling, it could be micro-credentialing, it could be internships, it can be different types of training. We're really proud that we launched an upskilling challenge last June. We've trained already 10,000 students. We have the funding and the partnerships in place to train over 35,000 more students over the next three years. To do this, we actually partnered with private sector companies, technology platforms, different trainers, as well as our own continuing ed departments. And we curated 30 different trainings in their areas of growth, from data analytics to cybersecurity to entrepreneurship. And finally, the fourth area, and again, the chancellor has been an incredible champion in terms of paid internships. We have placed in this past year over 3,000 students into internships, and we've been growing this number probably about 15% over each of the past two years. We started out closer to 2,000, and we've already gotten to 3,000. If we convert this to wages, that means $12 million have gotten into the hands and pockets of CUNY students, which is incredibly important. And finally, I'm really pleased to say that we're on pace to increase the 3,000 by two to three times over the next year. Our path to do that is by partnering with public and private funders, particularly for summer internships and gaining access to more and more subsidies and paid opportunities for students to go into paid internships. And so, finally, with my last two minutes, I wanted to highlight a number of partnerships that I think, again, should all bring you a great optimism and, I think, hope for what we're doing, and it'll give you a sense for what we do at CUNY Central. I won't go over all of this, and I know this is a dizzying list of different partners, but what I will say is that we are constantly on the lookout for partners who really tick all four of these boxes. Partners who not only will fundraise, but will hire from us, who will work to bring in other peer organizations, and who will also think about working with faculty to make sure that our students are receiving the upskilling and training and kind of curricular engagement that's so important. And so, I'll highlight just a handful. Centerbridge in that first column. Centerbridge has been working with us for many years. They have really invested in the notion that to diversify the investment industry, employers just simply have to work with CUNY. There is no other way in New York City, the finance capital of the world, to really diversify that sector. And so, they've gone from an excellent experience working really primarily with their firm, mentoring and training, paying students to participate in fellowship and mentoring programs. And they're in the midst of really working with peers and competitors to diversify, to kind of create different coalitions and different kind of levels of interest within the finance firms industry to kind of really work in kind of quite a scale to really recruit from the CUNY talent pool. In terms of employer partners, we've certainly heard a lot about the New York Job CEO Council. We're quite pleased we're on pace to train another 600. So, we'll have 1,200 students trained by training curriculum that companies are then going to use as a signal for hiring into internships and full-time jobs. But I wanted to highlight media makers. But I wanted to highlight Media Makers. That might not be a name known to many of you, but Media Makers is made up of eighty film, TV, and media companies who hire students. We have a partnership that pays for six hundred students to be placed in internships over the next two years. We're also working with Media Makers and several colleges on this call to create a badging and digital upskilling program so that students can be trained in post-production and production-related areas. The Brooklyn Navy Yard, another partner for many years, a consistent hire of our students in internships, but they took this COVID year to really reflect on what more they could do for CUNY. And so this year, we're really proud, we're going to be hiring a hundred, up to one hundred interns, and the Brooklyn Navy Yard is committed to converting at least half of those jobs into full-time professional roles for our students. Furthermore, they're interested in working and making this program citywide and pulling in a variety of different kind of urban innovation, advanced manufacturing, startup and technology firms and intermediaries just like them, so we can take this to a scale that adds a couple of zeros to that number. And then finally, in that column, I'll highlight Blackstone. I can't scoop the story, but let's just say that we're on pace to have a multi-year, multi-million, multi-school partnership with the firm that includes both curriculum as well as hiring within their firm and within their portfolio companies. So again, employer partners, we're not looking for the onesies and twosies here. We're looking for really partners who are going to bring their networks to bear for the university and for our students. Real quick on internships, we've been able to scale each and every one of these programs. So again, we're looking at not just being satisfied with relationships that we have, but Bloomberg, you know, they've hired a hundred and forty students in the past three years. They want to do more. So this winter break, they trained eighty CUNY students in a sort of bespoke CUNY masterclass, and from that group, they are interviewing and hiring students right now, and they want to continue to do more of this. Accenture, a very good partner with many of your schools, created twenty new positions just for CUNY students. So again, we're pushing the envelope, and I really appreciate all that the Chancellor has done to be really quite vocal about this. And then finally, in the upskilling and training area, the partner I'd like to highlight is, the first one, Portfolios with Purpose. Might not be a household name, but we have signed up twelve hundred CUNY students to take part in a fantasy investment portfolio challenge from February to May. You know, in the past, they've worked with about two hundred CUNY students. They came to us and said, "We want to do more. In this year of COVID, we have to do more." And so we really were able to push out and recruit well over a thousand students to participate in this. And so that gives you hopefully a sense that, you know, this has been, while a horrible year in so many regards, around employer engagement, around a recognition that CUNY students are talented, are motivated, are important, and are incredibly important talent source. That's been loud and clear and really received with quite open arms from our employer community. So, Chancellor, that's all I have, and hopefully this gives folks a sense of what they can do in terms of looking at their own Rolodexes and thinking about other partnerships that we'd like to bring to the university.
So, maybe some time for any questions from board members to Angie? Going once, going twice? Well then, thank you, and thank you, Angie and the team, for an incredible job. And we had not planned for this, but I also want to share that our beloved Andy Camus would be transitioning and becoming the new Dean of the School of Professional Studies at NYU, beginning in July. So, thank you for incredible work, Angie, and I so look forward to stealing you back from NYU very, very, very soon. So, thank you. And how do you take any other questions, Mr. Chair? But that concludes my report.
Okay, thank you, Chancellor, and we are going to miss you, Angie. You've done a great job for CUNY. And I couldn't echo the Chancellor's comments anymore. We'll try and find a way to steal you back at some point, so it's... But it is a loss for our institution having you leave, and a huge gain for NYU. So, congratulations, though. Let me now turn to items requiring a vote today. Given that all board members are participating remotely, and we cannot see everyone on the screen at the same time, I'll read the resolutions and ask for members to respond only if they'd like to abstain or oppose an item. Otherwise, your vote will be recorded as a yes vote. If you're voting no or abstaining, please state your name and vote. Additionally, if you wish to second an item or have any questions, please state your name first for the record, and let's try to avoid speaking over one another. For clarity and coordination, I'll read all of the items rather than turning to committee chairs. And away we go. Item number one, approval of minutes of the regular board meeting and executive session of February 1st, 2020. Be approved. Do I have a second for that? Any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item number two, the Committee on Audit. Item 2A, the Approval of the Payment Card Industry PCI Compliance Policy. The Payment Card Industry Data Security Standards is a set of operating and technical compliance requirements for merchants to address the security concerns resulting from the widespread use of payment, credit, and debit cards. The purpose of the C of the CUNY PCI Compliance Policy is to provide the university community with clear and manageable guidelines that will protect customer cardholder data and the university from a cardholder breach. University is committed to safeguarding personal information conveyed in processing card payments. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item 2B, the Approval of the Fiscal Year 2020 Audited Financial Statements. University is required to obtain an audit of its consolidated financial statements on an annual basis. May I have a second for this item?
Ten seconds.
So any discussion on the item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number three, Committee on Fiscal Affairs. Item 3A, a Resolution to Authorize the Fiscal Year 2021 University Operating and Capital Budget allocations. Colleges have been operating with a partial budget through February of 2021. The university is seeking approval to adopt the appropriated operating budget and the capital budget allocations for fiscal year 2021. This action will provide the colleges with a full annual budget. The allocation of funds for operating budgets will be distributed for the 2020-2021 university fiscal year, beginning July 1st of 2020, with a total of $3.7 billion. This amount represents the total available in the New York State enacted budget, which was adjusted in the fiscal 2022 State Executive Financial Plan and the New York City adopted budget. Colleges will submit spending plans to the university that will be developed in consultation with the elected faculty and student representatives. The capital budget includes $685 million in new state capital appropriations, 2.77 billion in state capital re-appropriations, and 109 million in city funds to be allocated to the colleges to fund the completion of existing capital projects. May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Is there any discussion on the item?
Trustee P. Quant has a question.
Yes, trustee.
In regards to capital projects and just spending plans at our institution, how are we prioritizing these projects, being that there are many students that are not on campus, and we're in a pandemic, ensuring we have proper ventilation and infrastructure, and how are we incorporating sustainable measures in those projects?
Ma, you want to take, or you want me to take?
I'll start, and then ask CEO Batista to fill in. But to your question, trustee Quant, about how they are developed, the spending plan for capital budget is developed in consultation with each campus at the beginning of each year. As we put together our capital request, we work with each campus to find out what their needs are. And so the plan is developed in consultation with the campuses. So, all of those are very campus-specific and, you know, are priorities of each campus president and the administration at the college.
The only thing that I would add is that an assessment is done every year that really determines what are the most critical capital projects in consultation with each college to ensure that we are addressing that. Furthermore, the Chancellor, during this last year, reallocated resources to ensure that because of the COVID pandemic, we were able to really focus on ventilation system. And I also want to thank trustee Mojica, because through his efforts, we were able to really get some of these projects that had to do with ventilation sort of moving in that direction. So I think it's a combination of all those factors, but with the emphasis of making sure that we focus on ventilation. And lastly, all of our projects, we look to make sure that we mean all the environmental and sustainability challenges that are part of the state and the city's mandate that have to push to CUNY as a goal. So, hopefully that answers your question.
Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item 3B, a Resolution to Authorize a Contract Extension with Blackboard Incorporated to ensure ongoing access to the Learn System and to enable the migration to Blackboard's cloud platform. For more than twenty years, the Blackboard Learn System has served as the sole university-wide learning management system and is the primary tool by which our university currently administers and delivers ninety-nine percent of all educational programs, courses, and sections during the ongoing pandemic. The existing contract with Blackboard will expire in December of 2021. The university is seeking approval for a contract extension to use the Blackboard Learn System for one year, with the option of an additional one-year extension. A contract extension is needed to maintain continuity of services while allowing time to procure and implement a next-generation learning management system via a formal request for proposal process. May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number four, Committee on Academic Policy Programs and Research. Item 4A, a Resolution Regarding the Establishment of a Program in Movement Science Leading to the Associate of Science Degree at Queensborough Community College. The Health, Physical Education, and Dance Department at Queensborough Community College proposes the establishment of an Associate of Science Degree in Movement Science, which will provide a range of academic and career opportunities for graduates. Movement science and related fields are among the fastest-growing employment sectors, both in the New York region and nationally, according to the United States Bureau of Labor Statistics. Movement science professionals are skilled in evaluating health behaviors and risk factors and are employed as leaders of health and fitness programs in university, corporate, commercial, or community settings. The Queensborough Community College's physical education faculty have the requisite qualifications and experience to provide valuable expertise and guidance that would support the proposed Movement Science Program. Moreover, the proposed AS in Movement Science Degree Program is designed to better serve Queensborough Community College's current and future students who enroll in its existing AA in Liberal Arts and Sciences Degree Program with concentrations in exercise science, physical education, or personal training. May I have a second for this item?
O'Donnell Torme, second.
Is there any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item 4B, a Resolution Regarding the Establishment of a Program in Physics Leading to the Associate in Science Degree at Queensborough Community College. The Department of Physics at Queensborough Community College proposes the establishment of an Associate of Science Degree in Physics. The AS degree will provide many options for students interested in STEM careers and is designed to align well with bachelor's degree programs offered at eight of the City University of New York's senior colleges. Furthermore, creating the proposed degree program will allow the Department of Physics to continue to offer rigorous introductory physics classes as well as more regularly provide more advanced physics classes, all the while allowing the department to build a community of physics majors that will provide students with relationships and resources that will support them to become better scientists. The proposed program will build on the existing AS degree programs in Liberal Arts and Sciences located in the STEM Academy and will allow more focused advisement and support for students interested in pursuing degrees and careers in the physical sciences. May I have a second for this item?
Second, O'Donnell Torme.
Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item 4C, the Approval of the Actions in the CAPR Dashboard. Routine academic matters, local academic policies, and course inclusions in the university's general education program are presented to the community on academic policy, programs, and research in summary form. Introduced in October of 2019, the CAPR Dashboard makes it possible for trustees to interact with this summary data. May I have a second for this item?
Erger, second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number five, the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration. Item 5A, a Resolution to Approve the Committee on Faculty, Staff, and Administration Report. The CFSA report reflects a total of eighty-five employee actions, including thirty-nine appointments and reappointments with tenure, twenty-nine fellowship leaves, and ten acting or interim appointments. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Is there any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item six, item 5B, a Resolution to Distribute Optional Retirement Plan and Tax-deferred Annuity Plan Generated Fees to Plan Participants. In 2015, CUNY was authorized to establish revenue credit accounts for the Optimal Retirement Plan, the Tax-deferred Annuity Plan, and the Frozen City University of New York Optional Retirement Plan. And continued negotiations with TIAA led to credits being accrued as a plan asset. These revenue credits will be distributed to participants via plan servicing credits. To achieve a reasonably equitable allocation for the retirement plan participants, it is recommended to proceed with an asset-based option or pro rata proportionate to investment revenue share, and continue this practice annually unless it is determined that a more suited practice is made available. May I have a second for this item?
Erger, second.
Is there any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item 5C, a Resolution to Declare June 19th or Juneteenth a Holiday for Eligible Employees of the City University of New York. On October 14th, 2020, Governor Andrew M. Cuomo signed legislation designating Juneteenth as an official public holiday in New York State. The new law celebrates Juneteenth, a day which commemorates the end to slavery and celebrates Black and African-American freedom and achievements, while encouraging continuous self-development and respect for all cultures. University desires that all eligible employees benefit from the New York State law, which is consistent with the university's mission and values. May I have a second for this item?
Unocrock, second.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Trustee P. Quant has a comment?
Yes.
Oh, well, I'm glad to see that our university is honoring and recognizing Juneteenth, such an important day which ended slavery. Well, there are still modern-day systemic racial issues going on. And I think that I want to allude to something in our Chancellor's report, the attack on the Asian community that happened over the last week. As an institution, we play a huge role in regards to systemic racism and upholding the culture and just education that we provide with our students and the community that we contribute ourselves and display ourselves to be. And I think that we need to play an active role even more in such pivotal times where things can be such sensitive for us not only to, you know, release our statements and condemn hate, but we need to ensure that more of our policies reflect that, and we create more access and opportunities for the most marginalized in our communities. And I'm glad to see that CUNY is recognizing this holiday, and I hope that we start to recognize other holidays. And we have even more policies that reflect that, because CUNY plays a huge role in how we see social justice. um in how we see social justice and how we see our society, and we are the future leaders and future elders of this country. And it's very important. We are part of an institution that reflects that.
Thank you so much for those comments, trustee. Thank you. Any other discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item five D, a resolution to amend the governance plan of Bronx Community College. The proposed amendments to the BCC governance plan have been approved by the college's governance body, the college senate, and they are recommended by the college president. The senate is comprised of the faculty council, representing faculty and other instructional staff, and the Student Government Association. The proposed amendments clarify the pool of candidates eligible for election to various senate committees, distinguishing between departmental representatives or faculty members and at-large representatives of the instructional staff as a whole. Widen representation of at-large representatives on several committees from instructional staff members of the senate's faculty council to at-large instructional staff members of the college as a whole, and establish a permanent senate committee on diversity and inclusion to support the college's mission to serve a diverse student body and to promote diversity among faculty and staff and diversity awareness. May I have a second for this item?
Yuna Clark, second.
Is there any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item five E, a resolution to name the Dr. Perry D. Hoffman Welcome Suite in the Student Counseling and Wellness Center at Hunter College. Hunter College Counseling and Wellness Services Center provides vital mental services, mental health services to thousands of Hunter College students. And on May eighth, two thousand and twenty, Bruce Hoffman committed one hundred thousand dollars to the Hunter College Foundation in support of the Counseling and Wellness Services Department. Mr. Hoffman's gift celebrates the life of his mother, Bell Steinhardt, a Hunter alumni class of nineteen oh six, and that of his late wife, Dr. Perry D. Hoffman, who passed away in two thousand and nineteen. Dr. Perry D. Hoffman had a distinguished career as a mental health professional and co-founded a renowned organization that mobilized parents of individuals with borderline personality disorder. To celebrate the generosity of Bruce Hoffman and to honor the contributions of his late wife, Dr. Perry D. Hoffman, to the field of psychology, Hunter College enthusiastically supports naming the Dr. Perry D. Hoffman Welcome Suite in the Student Counseling and Wellness Center at Hunter College. May I have a second for this item?
Second, Yuna Clark.
Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item five F, a resolution to name the Alexis D. Fraser Scholarship at LaGuardia Community College. Alexis D. Fraser and Monica Barrett are committed philanthropists and strong advocates of community colleges and the important role they play in the lives of many underprivileged students. Starting in two thousand and fourteen, Ms. Fraser and Ms. Barrett began supporting the Young Adult Internship Program in the college's Division of Adult and Continuing Education. In the recent years, the Young Adult Internship Program has been discontinued, and Ms. Fraser and Ms. Barrett have asked that the unspent balance of their donations totaling forty thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents plus a recent gift of ten thousand dollars be combined to fifty thousand, one hundred and fifty-seven dollars and fifty-three cents to establish an endowed scholarship for student support to be named the Alexis D. Fraser Endowed Scholarship. The new scholarship will provide critical funding for tuition, fees, and textbooks for students in good standing with a minimum GPA of three point zero with awards capped at two thousand dollars per semester. May I have a second for this item?
Yuna Clark, second.
Any discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item five G, a resolution requesting to name the Dr. Diane Bova Call Endowed Scholarship for student success at Queensborough Community College. Dr. Diane Bova Call dedicated more than four decades of her life to Queensborough Community College, where she most recently served as its president from two thousand and thirteen to two thousand and eighteen. Dr. Call came from Queensborough in the early eight nineteen seventies as an unpaid intern while studying at Columbia University and stayed for forty-seven years, working in virtually all major areas of administration and academics. Dr. Call's legacy at Queensborough is immeasurable, and following her retirement uh in August twenty eighteen, one hundred faculty, staff, and friends of the college donated a total of fifty thousand, one hundred and forty-one dollars and sixty-seven cents in her honor to the Queensborough Community College Fund Incorporated to support an endowed scholarship for student success. This scholarship will provide funds for educational expenses, including textbooks, instructional fees and materials, supplies, and transportation costs to enable students to complete their degree programs without interruption and graduate within two years of enrollment. May I have a second for this item?
Second, Yuna Clark.
Is there any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item five H, a resolution to award Nevin Kohn with early tenure at the City University of New York Graduate School of Public Health and Health Policy with an application of bylaw six point two six point two point C two. Professor Professor Nevin Kohn joined the CUNY School of Public Health as associate professor in two thousand and fifteen, following his role as an assistant professor of urban environmental studies at the New School from two thousand and seven to two thousand and fourteen, which included two years of tenure clock pause due to administrative leadership role there. His research is unique, innovative, and highly policy-relevant, as he is one of the foremost transdisciplinary researchers today in the fields of urban agriculture, food systems, and sustainability. Professor Kohn's book, Beyond the Kale, published by the University of Georgia Press, has received critical acclaim and is noted as a significant work that advances the academic and public discourse on the food system in America today. He has been the the pie on multiple grants from organizations such as the Robin Hood Foundation, Fund for Public Health in New York City, and Hunger Free America, among others. He's also served as the co-pie on several other collaborative research grants. He serves as the research director of the CUNY Urban Food Policy Institute. In addition, he has served as on the SPH Assessment Committee and the Faculty-Student Disciplinary Committee, among others. He's the coordinator of the CUNY Food Collaboratory. May I have a second for this item?
Second.
Any discussion on this item? We'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item is approved. Item number six, Committee on Facilities Planning and Management. Item six A, a resolution takes to authorize a lease amendment with two twenty-five fourth LLC as landlord to extend the term of the lease at two twenty-five Park Avenue South, New York, for the Baruch College Daycare Center. Baruch College operates the Baruch College Early Learning Center at the at the premises with the mission to provide childcare services to Baruch students who otherwise would not be able to attend college without these services. The university intends to relocate the functions and staff from the current location to a new lease facility closer to Baruch College. University needs up to one year to negotiate and register the new lease on behalf of the college and accomplish substantial completion of the new build-out. May I have a second for this item?
For a second.
Is there any discussion on this item?
Just because has a question. Well, it's kind of related to this uh item. Uh, in regards to sustainability, I have a lot of questions about sustainability, um and it was alluded before. I know that we, when we are leasing our buildings and whatnot to other people. Um, what I know Executive Vice Chancellor Batista alluded to our sustainable guidelines. I just want to know um a little bit more about how do we come up with those sustainable guidelines in regards to our facilities, but also as an institution, where do we stand on the divestment of fossil fuels, being that we are a huge university? And how do we are going to play a role in that in New York City and just our country in general? I don't know if Executive Vice Chancellor Batista wants to elaborate more on that.
Sure, we 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 have two mandates. We have one that is we're mandated by the by the state to meet to meet certain criteria connected to sustainability. And I'm happy to report that on on that front, we're meeting that goal. And then we have a second mandate by the City of New York, which I'm happy to report, we're getting close to meeting that goal. And and the and and really is basically to make sure that when we're when we're looking at buildings or renovations to buildings or constructions that those buildings meet those requirements. Now, one of the things that we're planning on doing is I know that your membership is very interested in this area, and we're planning actually a presentation. Uh, Traya and I are planning to do a presentation. We're going to reach out to you to make a presentation to really bring the students up to them, the work that CUNY is doing, which we're very proud of. Uh, recently, we had a presentation by Traya that was done at the uh Facilities Committee of the Board, and we want to take that presentation uh sort of to the next level, and I'll turn it over to Matt on the uh. And I'm happy to give you more detail uh connected to that, but we're definitely going to be doing that presentation very soon. But Matt?
Thanks, Hector. And trustee Paquin, in terms of fossil fuel divestment, um at our last subcommittee meeting on investments, which was in early January, I think it was January eleventh, um, the issue of ESG investing came up, um environmental, social, and corporate governance um investing came up, and um our outsourced chief investment officer firm, Makita Fiduciary Management, was asked to um come back and give the subcommittee at its next meeting a report on ESG investing and divestment and what um other institutions are doing and what CUNY's options could be. Um, and so um Makita will have that information at the next meeting. Um, but I am pleased to report that in terms of our exposure, our exposure to fossil fuel investments in the CUNY pool uh currently is under two percent. Um, but we look forward to Makita's report at the next meeting, and we'll have um we'll have more information at that point.
Thank you.
Thank you. Um. Are there, is there any other discussion on this item? Okay, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. That item's approved. Item number seven, Executive Committees, a Notice of Action Taken on March first, two thousand and twenty-one for informational purposes with no vote required. City University of New York, the appointment of Denise Bay, Denise Maybank as interim president of Medgar Everes College. And there's an item that the chancellor has requested to be added to the agenda today. Let me now call on the secretary to present item number eight. You're on mute.
Thank you. Thanks. Okay, so item number eight is a resolution to appoint Patricia Ramsey as president at Medgar Everes College at the City University of New York. Whereas Dr. Patricia Ramsey is currently serving as Senior Executive Fellow at the Thurgood Marshall Fund, an organization that provides support to public predominantly black universities and public historically black colleges and universities, HBCUs, through scholarships, capacity building, research initiatives, innovative programs, and strategic partnerships. And whereas Dr. Ramsey was previously the provost and vice president for Academic Affairs at Lincoln University, the oldest degree-granting public HBCU in the nation, named a two thousand and eighteen, two thousand and nineteen Fulbright HBCU institutional leader. And whereas Dr. Ramsey served in several roles at Bowie State University, a regional comprehensive public university within the university system of Maryland, including provost and vice president for Academic Affairs, and interim president, Dr. Ramsey served as campaign champion for a comprehensive campaign that exceeded the fifteen million dollar campaign goal, solicited and obtained a corporate gift to establish a retention-related customer service program, served as a principal investigator for a two-point-seven million dollar grant from the National Science Foundation, and did a presentation on the provost's role in fundraising at a national meeting of the American Association of State Colleges and Universities. And whereas Dr. Ramsey was the vice president for Academic Affairs at Shaw University, where she established the Office of Research and Sponsored Programs, implemented the university's first Master of Science Degree and Honors Program and implemented a space science education program with funding from NASA. And whereas Dr. Ramsey holds a PhD in Biology from Georgetown University, an AM in Biology from Harvard University, an MS in Botany from Howard University, and a BS in Biology Education from Norfolk State University. And whereas a search committee chaired by Board of Trustees Chair, um Board of Trustees, uh Henry Berger, conducted a nationwide search beginning in September, two thousand and twenty, and recommended Dr. Ramsey as one of the finalists for the presidency of Medgar Everes College. And whereas after consultation with various Medgar Everes College stakeholders, the chancellor is recommending Patricia Ramsey as Medgar Everes College President. And whereas section six point two point B of the bylaws of the Board of Trustees states that "A distinguished person of proven record appointed to the title of associate professor or the title of professor who had tenure in another accredited institution of higher learning may be appointed with immediate tenure by the board in its discretion. Now therefore, be it resolved that the Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Patricia Ramsey as president at Medgar Everes College effective May first, two thousand and twenty-one, at an annual salary of three hundred and twenty thousand dollars. And be it further resolved that the trust, Board of Trustees of the City University of New York approve the appointment of Patricia Ramsey as full professor of biology with tenure at Medgar Everes College effective May first, two thousand and twenty-one, and placed on leave while she serves as president of Medgar Everes College." The explanation reads as follows, "Dr. Patricia Ramsey is an innovative and collaborative leader, a champion for student success, and her background as a scientist helps to inform her approach as a leader. A strategic thinker who has served on and or led the strategic planning team at three universities, Dr. Ramsey is an advocate for transparency as an integral part of building consensus across student, faculty, administration, and community constituencies. The chancellor highly recommends this appointment."
Um, I make a motion to add item number eight to our agenda. May I have a second?
Second, Berger.
Um, item eight has been added. Uh, I now present item number eight. May I have a second for the item?
Berger, second.
Is discussion on this item? Uh, Chancellor, I'm going to go to you, but before I do, let me thank um the chairperson of the search committee, Henry Berger, uh, and my colleagues who also served on that search committee, uh trustee Clark and trustee Sunshine. And I believe that, uh, you know, I was pleased to serve on that search committee also. Um, I think we have a star, and I think that that the Medgar Everes community and Medgar Everes College needs a strong leader and a leader who will bring everybody together and lead the institution to new heights. So I'm going to just say how pleased I am. Um, I I I think it was a a process where clearly uh the best candidate emerged. And I would just, uh, again, like to thank my colleagues. President Schrader was on that also and was incredibly helpful uh in helping to shape the direction and the discussion. So let me stop there and go to you, Chancellor.
Uh, thank you, Chair Thompson. I echo all your remarks and your gratitude to the board members who served in the in the committee and to President Schrader, and also to Vice Chancellor Richard White, uh, who was also part of that uh of that committee. Thank you. Uh, Dr. Ramsey was clearly uh um in all the consultation uh really totally high-ranked by everyone, a incredible experience as an administrator, uh, experience in fundraising, uh, her deep knowledge of working in HBCUs, uh, which we many felt that it would be incredibly powerful and transferable to the mission and the work at Medgar Everes College. Um, her work um also with uh in which she's had leadership roles, she's also served once as an interim president, so she has uh an understanding of of the role, uh, particularly of the external sides of of being a president. Uh, I couldn't find uh really a more remarkable person uh to nominate to this board. Uh, it gives me great pride that during It gives me great pride that during Women's History Month will be nominating a divorce such a cruiser. Making history by naming the first woman president at Medgar Ever's College. What a great role model, female scientist to all her students. And to entire Medgar Ever's community. So again, it's been a delight to get to know her in the process. And I think that she'd be a great transformational leader at Medgar. And she also would be, you know, a great addition to the the group of presidents. While we do this, I I know that you made the comment that we announced it in. From the working executive committee, but I also want to thank Vice Chancellor Maybanks for agreeing to. Serve as a more versatile and superb pinch hitter between now and May first. And really work along with Brenda Grace and others in creating a transition committee. And making sure that everything is ready should devote the board vote on. Dr. Ramsey's appointment. So very enthusiastic and delighted to. Like the chancellor said, the chairman said, appointing a start and and making history in one of our great colleges.
Any other discussion on this item?
Has a comment?
Yes.
Well, I I this is the most exciting thing on the agenda this evening, and it's a pleasure to. Be a part of the body that gets to vote on this, especially Women's History Month, the first woman president, black woman. President at Medgar, and I think this is what CUNY is, and this is a testament, and we need to continue to see more of this. And it's an inspiration to just not only me, but young women all across CUNY. Who will look up and to see our leaders, and I think that we need to continue to make a commitment to amplify and affirm our women, especially women in leadership. And you know, it's a testament that black women continue to lead. They always have led, and it's an honor to be a part of this voting body to do this. So thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, in addition to those on the search. Who have already been thanked, we had very strong student and faculty participation, and it was vital. And we also had the participation of Rena Ever's Everett, Medgar Ever's daughter. And it was terrific to have her there and her commitment to the college. And the central staff, Dolly Martinez, Mahalit Sagay and Anna Padilla. Made it all possible, and we couldn't have done it without them. So thank you to them.
No, it was it was a great collaborative effort, and it was. It was it was a pleasure to be part of, and and again, thank you for your leadership, Henry. Any other comments? All right, we'll now vote. Please only respond if you'd like to abstain or oppose. We have a new president at Medgar Ever's College. There being no further business, I ask for a motion to adjourn this meeting. Do I have a second?
Second.
Second.
All right, we are adjourned, and everyone have a have a wonderful evening. Take care.
Thank you.